This time, I would ask everybody to please silence any electronic devices. Is this working? Yeah. Please silence any electronic devices. If you must take a call during the meeting, we ask that you please leave the chambers and do so in the hallway. If for some reason during the meeting an emergency should arise, please exit the chamber in an orderly manner, make a right-hand turn, walk to the end of the hall and down the stairs. Should that exit be blocked, please exit the chamber, make a left and then a right, and proceed down the stairs at the far end of the hallway. If you need assistance, please ask and we'll be happy to provide it to you. Please do not use the elevator in case there's emergencies. At this point, I'd like to invite Danny Pace, pastor to students of Allen Memorial Baptist Church, to the podium for our invocation.
Counsel, thank you for inviting me to be a part of the proceedings tonight. It is an honor and a blessing to be able to do it. Before I begin with our prayer, I'd like to just read a quick passage that I feel like might bring some reflection for tonight's proceedings, but also for all of us in our lives as we just live daily. The Book of Proverbs, Chapter 4, says this. It says, "Do not forsake wisdom, and she will protect you; love her, and she will watch over you. Wisdom is supreme, so therefore get wisdom; though it cost all you have, get understanding. Esteem her, and she will exalt you; embrace her, and she will honor you." In the New Testament, James adds to this conversation. He says, "But wisdom that comes from heaven is, first of all, pure, peace-loving, considerate, submissive, full of mercy and good fruit, impartial and sincere." He ends that confession by saying, "If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without fault, and it will be given to you." This is a good word. Please pray with me. Holy God, we first and foremost thank you. On behalf of those gathered here, Lord, we thank you for your great blessings, for the gift of life which we acknowledge comes from you, for your provision which is often overlooked and taken for granted, for our individual callings and giftings which place us in the perfect places to be of service to others, for the community that we live in, and for the leadership that you have raised up. We thank you for your freedoms, and we thank you for your love and for your grace which are boundless and unmerited. You tell us in Scripture that you've established those in authority to care for us, to promote peace, to maintain order, and to seek justice. We pray for our community. We pray for its leaders, oh Lord, for our mayor and for our various officials, particularly those who are assembled here tonight. Grant them the wisdom that comes from heaven alone, pure, peace-loving, considerate, submissive, merciful, impartial, and sincere. Grant them the eyes and ears to adequately represent the people that they have been elected to speak for. Grant them the unity that they might unify our community through their own example. And Father, grant them a hunger to pursue the beautiful tapestry of justice and mercy which you so perfectly display. Bless them, Father. May you be ever present in our time together in the meetings to come. I humbly ask these things in the name of my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, whom offers life both now and in the age to come. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Pace. Please rise now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every equal justice, law,
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have a presentation.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
Where's my friend Grace?
Over there.
Hey, Grace. Grace, would you come up here and join me? So, as you know, Grace Murdock is our Secretary of Kindness here in the city of Salisbury, and it's my pleasure to ask her to come up here and join me as we read this proclamation. Hey, good evening. How are you?
Great.
So, this proclamation reads, "Whereas the City Council, with support from the mayor of Salisbury, passed Resolution Number 2850 on July 9, 2018, for the purpose of declaring support for a kinder world for our children to inherit. And the city of Salisbury pledged ongoing support at that time to World Kindness USA in that resolution for its ambitious endeavors to encourage all of humanity, from classrooms to staff rooms and boardrooms, to those residing in the corridors of government, to seek kinder options in all matters, regardless of politics, race, religion, gender, sexual preference, age, and even zip codes. And the city of Salisbury held Dance for Kindness events in 2016, 2017, and 2018, organized by my friend here, as community-unity opportunities. And the kindness climate has grown to include bike shares, marathons, youth centers, gardens, community gardens, kindness speeches, and even festivals. And many Wycomica County public schools are engaged in kindness and anti-bullying initiatives with their students. All citizens of Salisbury and surrounding areas have been encouraged to be proactive in modeling kind behaviors and teaching children and young adults the importance of kindness, empathy, and compassion for others regardless of appearances or circumstances, the potential for outcome being the creation of a peaceful, kind, harmonious community which will hopefully be felt for generations to come. And whereas I and Grace here, our Secretary of Kindness, have for the last two years highlighted kindness during the month of February through our random acts of kindness, which I'll talk about again in a minute here, and Salisbury is on track to become the first world kindness USA city in America. Now therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim February 17 through 23, 2019, as Kindness Awareness Week in our city. And I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of being kind, to look for opportunities to perform random acts of kindness each and every day, and to seek kinder options in all matters that come before you." So, I do have one other thing that I want to read here, and this is, you know, the governor likes to outdo us. This is actually a citation from our governor, and this reads, "The city of Salisbury, Maryland, celebrates Random Acts of Kindness Week. Be it known that on behalf of the citizens of this state and recognition of a grateful tribute to honor the Salisbury community, Mayor Jacob Day and the nonprofit organization Wycomica Grows Kindness for their combined efforts to promote Random Acts of Kindness Week, supporting public awareness and kindness activities for the betterment and success of the community. And as our citizens join in expressing our admiration and sincere best wishes for a meaningful celebration, we're pleased to confer upon you," this governor's citation, "signed Governor Lawrence J. Hogan, Lieutenant Governor Boyd Rutherford, and Secretary of State John C. Wobensmith." So, thanks to the governor for acknowledging the work that's going on in this community. And before I hand it over to Grace, let me just say this. The reason why this is important, kindness is not just some word. It's not fluff. It's not something to be just slapped on as a bumper sticker, something like that. Kindness is about how we operate. Kindness is about the customer service that we provide. It's about our police officers interacting with citizens in need. It's about our EMTs out there responding to people who are injured. It's about the way we answer a phone. It's about how quickly and promptly we respond to services. And the same is true in your businesses. I'm confident. Same is true with our teachers in our schools. It's really about how we operate. We live in a world that lives frequently through a manifestation of the opposite of kindness. And I guarantee you, if you watch how these people conduct business, if you watch, you know, what we do, what we try to model in our staff meetings, our discussions, we try to be kind every single day and kinder as an organization every single day. And that's really just to set the example, because it takes more than 435 city employees or one mayor or five council members. It takes 35,000 of us every single day being kinder to one another. So, Grace.
Thank you. I'm just overwhelmed and so pleased. I think beyond Christmas and my birthday, the day Jake and I go out for Random Acts of Kindness is probably the top three days of the year for me. So, it's tomorrow. We don't care about the weather. It's going to be great. We have schools to visit. We have businesses to visit, and we will be passing out items that will help others be kind, pay it forward. I couldn't be prouder of the city that I live in and the support from Jake and the council for what we are doing. And we are embedding kindness into this community every day. The schools are on board. Businesses are on board. I was just at Acorn Market today. I was met with an act of kindness as I walked through the door. It's just awesome. And I'm counting on all of you to take this from this room tonight and to pay it forward and to remind everyone that kindness is the thread that needs to run through our community to make us great. So, thank you so much. Thanks, Jake.
And to start, for you coffee lovers, tomorrow morning, I'm just going to say it now, 7:30, Rise Up Riverside Drive, drive-thru. Come through. We'll be buying your coffee. We'll be pouring your coffee for you. Well, we'll be buying your coffee. We'll stay away from the actual, yeah, we'll stay away from actually pouring the coffee.
Leave a few minutes, extra minutes.
But we'll be buying your coffee and hope that you'll pay it forward to somebody else through your own random act of kindness. So, 7:30 to 8:00, come through the drive-thru tomorrow. We'll be as quick as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to invite Detective Caputo, Sergeant Hitty, and Sergeant Hughes to come to the podium with a special discussion.
Promotions happen with that.
Corporal?
Apparently, he's not coming up. His little camp is shy.
Corporal, they wrote, this is not...
All right. I'd like to thank everyone for having us here tonight and giving us an opportunity to speak. Again, my name's Sergeant Higley with Salisbury PD. Behind me is Jason Caputo. We are here to renew our efforts with the Maryland Special Olympics for the calendar year 2019. As in the past couple of years that we have come in front of you, we have presented you with a number of different events that we have done, to include cops on rooftops, cover the cruiser events. One of our larger events is going to be our truck pull. All those events are still on the calendar. The only difference is, we intend on making our truck pull that we do in the spring a larger event. This year, we have partnered with Ann Hilliard from Shorecraft Brewers, and we're going to be bringing in three of our local beer craft companies to participate with us. The event will be held on April 27, and it will be from about 11 until 4:00. The event is also being assisted through Laura Soper and Jamie Heater. The event probably generated us about $10,000 just with the truck pull alone last year without the alcohol connection. We anticipate probably in the neighborhood of about 12 to 15 this year. All proceeds that we raise through all of our events are going directly to the Lower Shore Special Olympics. These events are very important to our athletes. The Cover the Cruiser event that we did this past November, we raised $200 in two hours. That $200 was immediately turned over to our Lower Shore athletes, where it bought them brand-new uniforms. They then turned around in about a month, and they won the gold medal in the soccer tournament here at Crown Sports Center. So, our events are very important to what we hold for our athletes down here, and we're looking for permission to continue on with what we do here in Wycomico County and the Lower Shore.
Thank you very much. These guys, you've got to be with them when they're doing these events. I was at the Cover the Car the last time, Cover the Cruiser. And then, you probably remember them standing on the roofs, raising money. That's what the city's all about. You talk about kindness and everything else. This is what it's all about. These guys don't have to do this. They don't have to. And yet, they go out and they put these events together. As many of you know, I used to run Lower Shore Enterprises. You cannot believe the value for what these guys bring to Lower Shore Enterprise, Del Point, Bay Shore Health, you name it. It means so much to those people, and I think we owe them a tremendous round of applause for what they do. And you have our full support. You've got our support, and whatever you need, let us know. I'll be there.
I appreciate it.
I won't pull the truck, though.
Well, we're looking for a celebrity team back up.
We'll take it slow.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This time, I'll entertain a motion to discuss the vacant council position.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'm sure everyone is aware of the fact that we had a vacancy when Mr. Rudisill resigned for a new job over in Baltimore. I'm just going to provide a recap of what is demanded by the charter, and just bear with me for a couple of minutes. In case of a vacancy for any reason in the council, the council within four weeks of the occurrence of the vacancy shall elect some qualified person to fill such vacancy for the unexpired term. In case of the vacancy for, I'm sorry, in case of the vacancy for any reason in the office of mayor, the council within four weeks of the occurrence of vacancy shall elect some qualified person to serve as acting mayor for the unexpired term. Any vacancies in either council or the office of mayor shall be filled by a majority vote of all members of the council. In case the mayor or the councilmen shall fail to qualify within five days of the notification of election, a vacancy shall exist to be filled as provided in this section. The council shall immediately certify a vote so taken to the city clerk. The city clerk shall record the vote and shall forthwith notify the person so elected, who shall within five days of the notice qualify in the manner as regularly elected city officials. Council advertised the position in the Daily Times, Salisbury Independent, and the city website. Council received all of the letters and resumes within the allotted time from three candidates. Council interviewed each candidate in closed session on Monday, February 4, 2019, and anonymously voted by secret ballot on the same day. So, we are, that brings us to this evening, and at this point in time, I will entertain a motion to elect the new council member.
I make the motion to appoint Angela Blake to the Salisbury City Council, representing District 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Boda, seconds. I'll now call the vote. All those in favor of electing Angela M. Blake to fill the vacant District 5 council position, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I would like to invite Ms. Blake to come up and join me up here. And as is called for, I would also ask Beau McAllister, the clerk of this courts, to come up and please swear in Ms. Blake.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Angela Blake.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Council member for the city of Salisbury.
Council member for the city of Salisbury.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to sign it, and then I'll meet your signature. This has been described as my spellbook. There's your name right there. I think Josh gave it to me. Thank you. Oh, thank you very much.
Please give a warm welcome to our newest council member. Okay, the tradition is that I turn the meeting over to you now and you run it. But I'm going to give you a break today.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Just relax. We'll be good. All right. Let me catch up to where I am. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. There are two items on the consent agenda tonight. Resolution Number 2907 approving the appointment of Amber Green to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending February 2023, and Resolution Number 2908 approving the appointment of Michael Peransky to the Parks and Recreation Committee for term ending February 2022. And that's it.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You have to speak to see that?
Oh, I did see that.
We get yelled at if we don't do that.
Aye.
You can just bring it right out. Okay. And the chair votes aye. Is Amber or Michael here? Michael, please stand and be recognized. We want to thank you very much for volunteering and being appointed.
Next Tuesday night is the...
First one. That's obviously Mr. Boda's committee. Entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Good evening. How are you? Mrs. Miller.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Blake.
Thank you.
Three items this evening. The first one being an award of bid for RFP 19-107. That's the Engineering Services for Inflow and Infiltration Study. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals from qualified and experienced firms to provide services that will identify inflow and infiltration into the existing sanitary sewer collection systems and prepare strategies to reduce those amounts. Upon completion of field tests, sewer system analysis, and remediation identification, a data analysis report will be provided that will include a recommendation and ranking of rehabilitation projects for the city of Salisbury's wastewater collection system. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, posting the solicitation on both the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of four vendors submitted proposals by the due date and time of November 21, 2018, at 2:30 PM. The vendors' technical proposals were evaluated by committee according to the criteria established in the solicitation document, and pricing was open for those proposals that received a minimum qualifying score of at least 70% of the technical points available. I did note in your packet the evaluation criteria, the points associated with those, and the points associated with the price proposal as well. And I also noted in your packet the composite scores for those four vendors and their ranking. Two tasks are recommended for award by the Department of Infrastructure and Development. It's Item 101A, which is implementing the visual inspections and the flow monitoring stations for the inflow and infiltration identification, and then also Item 107, which is the final report or the study, the INI study. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award these tasks in the amount of $299,013, RJN Group from Baltimore, Maryland.
Any questions? Okay.
Next item is change order number seven to contract RFP 10-15. That's the wastewater treatment plant construction management and inspection. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number seven in the amount of $60,000 for RFP 10-15 wastewater treatment plant construction management and inspection. Additional construction management and part-time inspection services are necessary due to the construction schedule extension to February 28, 2019. This change order also incorporates final time extension negotiations with the contractor, Ullman Shooty. These amounts are estimated at $40,000 and $20,000 respectively, and will be billed as costs are incurred. Funds are available in the wastewater treatment plant project account, which is noted in your packet, and additional details are also noted in the departmental memo which I've attached. The procurement department hereby requests council's approval for change order number seven, as noted above, to GHD in the amount of $60,000.
Questions? Okay.
The last item this evening is an award of bid for RFP 19-109. This is the New Urban Design and Consultant Services. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals from qualified and experienced firms with a focus on new urban context-based design practices for the purpose of obtaining a qualified, multi-disciplined team for on-call professional design and consultant services. This award will constitute an indefinite deliver, excuse me, indefinite delivery, indefinite quality contract. No minimum value or task assignment was implied or guaranteed to be awarded. Thereby, the city reserves the right to assign tasks acknowledged in the solicitation document on an as-needed basis to the firm most suitable for the project requirements. While the initial term of the contract is for one year, the solicitation also included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of this contract with the same terms and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms, contingent upon sufficient budget appropriation and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of 15 vendors submitted bids by the due date and time of December 10, 2018, at 2:30 PM. Of the 14 vendors deemed responsible, the city wishes to award contracts to a maximum of five firms, thereby allowing the city the flexibility to assign work based on a firm's availability and expertise. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award contract RFP 19-109 to the following five vendors. Tool Design Group, Johnson, Murmuran, and Thompson Incorporated, Design Collective, Flora Teter Landscape Architects, and Horg Copeland Mop. Purchase orders for specific... Purchase orders for specific tasks will be issued as needed, with subsequent annual renewals processed under the contract extension clause by the Department of Procurement.
Questions?
Did 14 vendors respond to it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Wow. Why can't we get 15 vendors to respond to everything we put out?
Because this is a good job.
Right?
And they were great responses.
Yeah.
I mean, great, great teams, great companies. Some of these are world-class.
Yeah, a couple of the names I recognize, I mean, I recognize them. So, I mean, that.
You can have your other question.
Nah, better not. He's not feeling good today. I ain't gonna bother him.
He asked a question.
We have, our mayor is an urban designer. Why do we need to hire, or an urban planner? I'm sorry.
And I, my answer, my answer was, before the meeting, you never operate on your own child.
Yeah, I mean, I wish I had the time to.
I'm sure you'll have input.
Provide those design services to us. But thank, thank you for your confidence in my abilities. I'm sure I'd be just as good.
Any, any other questions before we vote?
And call Smith.
Okay. All right. I'll call, I'll call the vote, then. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Entertain a motion to approve resolution 2909.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Second.
Second.
A little louder. Go ahead.
Second.
There you go. Ms. Blake, okay.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Resolution number 2909, a resolution of the city of Salisbury approving amendments to the bylaws of the Salisbury Zoo Commission, whereas the Salisbury Zoo Commission is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to support the Salisbury Zoological Park, and whereas the commission's bylaws refer to the city's Department of Public Works, and whereas the city of Salisbury restructured the department's effective October 31, 2017, and whereas Charter Amendments Resolution 2017-1 dated September 11, 2017 divided the Department of Public Works into the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the Department of Field Operations, and the Department of Water Works, and whereas the city of Salisbury would like to update the commission's bylaws to reflect these changes, and whereas the commission would also like to update the bylaws to remove the requirement to maintain an accurate animal inventory to be reviewed annually in a report, and whereas the amended bylaws of the Salisbury Zoo Commission is attached here too, and hereby made a part of this resolution.
Any questions? I have just one comment, and Ralph, tell me, correct me if I'm wrong. The reason that we're not doing, we are doing the inventory, but it's just a requirement of the federal government for, and for our certification. Is that correct?
Correct, and all our records are digitized now, so we can produce an inventory any day.
Great. Just want to make sure that everybody knows we're not just stopping it. Okay. All those in favor of resolution number 2909, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2910.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Are you waiting for me?
Ms. Jackson.
I was waiting.
We'll get into rhythm. That's all right. All right.
Resolution number 2910, a resolution of the city of Salisbury to purchase improved real property located at 501 West Isabella Street from Yusef Khalid Ansari for use by the Department of Field Operations, whereas the seller, Yusef Khalid Ansari, owns improved residential property located at 501 West Isabella Street, which was acquired by deed dated November 12, 2014, and recorded in the Wycomico County, Maryland Land Records in Lieber MSB number 3832 Folio 170, and whereas the city of Salisbury owns the property adjacent to this property, and whereas the Department of Field Operations utilizes the adjacent property owned by the city and desires to expand, and whereas the city of Salisbury desires to purchase the property located at 501 West Isabella Street to further meet the needs of the Department of Field Operations, and whereas the attached contract of sale for the purchase, purchase of the property located at 501 West Isabella Street is required to be authorized by the city council prior signing, which affords protection to the city if issues related to the title, property condition, et cetera, cannot be remedied to the city's satisfaction before the city is obligated to complete the purchase.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution 2910, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2911.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Mr. Boda.
That's a good one. Resolution number 2911, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland approving the extension of a moratorium for building permit fees, plan review fees, plumbing permit fees, mechanical permit fees, capacity fees, and central line fees for single-family owner occupied detached dwellings, whereas the mayor of the city of Salisbury and city council desire to continue the infill building lot incentive program in designated areas throughout the city to encourage single-family homeownership and enhance the economic welfare of the community as a whole, and whereas the city of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development requires a plan review, building permit, plumbing permit, and mechanical permit as required by the International Building Code 2015 edition, and also plan review, building permit, permit, and mechanical permit fees to be paid in connection with the construction of a new single-family detached dwelling, and whereas the city of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development requires capacity fees, water and sewer tap fees, and central line fees to be paid for the construction of new single-family detached dwelling, and whereas the public safety and general welfare and protection of the public construction of a single-family detached dwelling is performed by qualified persons and appropriate permits and inspection of the work performed, and whereas the mayor has recommended that the city approve a moratorium fee as set forth in the resolution, and whereas the comprehensive connection charge tied to the city's water and sewer system consists of four specific fees, which are capacity fee, facility fee, line fee, and sewer connection, and water, water mere tap fee, and whereas Section 1302070A9 of the Salisbury Municipal Code allows the mayor and council to adopt by separate resolution discounts for the comprehensive connection charges, connection charge to encourage water and sewer usage that is consistent with the city's goals, and whereas the city policy requires the approval of city council in order to waive any fee that is associated with a project not being performed directly by the city.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number 2911, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. By the way, that program has been remarkably successful in the last year. What's our total, what was our total?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. And before that?
Not a single one.
Not one. It's good.
And many more in plans.
Yeah, that's great news. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2912.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson?
A second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Blake, okay.
Resolution number 2912, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland providing a payment in lieu of taxes pilot to the development of Pemberton Manor LLC located at 1017 Fairground Drive, Salisbury, Maryland 21801, whereas the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland recognizes that there is a significant need for quality housing units in Salisbury for persons with low to moderate incomes, and whereas Pemberton Manor LLC, or its assini, a Maryland limited liability corporation, currently owns and maintains a rental housing development comprised of approximately 209 units known as Pemberton Manor, located at 1017 Fairground Drive in Salisbury, Maryland, of which 143 units will assist persons of lower income as required by applicable law or regulations, and whereas Pemberton Manor LLC proposes to renovate all of the HUD units at this rental housing development, make improvements to the landscaping, entrance and fencing of the project, install security cameras on the land, and renovate the non-HUD units as well, and whereas the city of Salisbury supports this project because it will continue to address the need for quality affordable housing for persons with lower incomes, and whereas the city of Salisbury desires to provide a payment in lieu of taxes.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. Thank you so much, city. I thank you for doing this. This is my district, and it was very much needed, and the mayor knows we walked through that area and saw the conditions of that facility, and I'm just so thankful that we all agreed to do this. Thank you.
I agree. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number 2912, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2913.
So moved.
Mr. Boda? All right, Ms. Blake and Mr. Boda.
Resolution number 2913, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland adopting a capital improvement plan for the five-year period FY '20 to FY '24, whereas it is important for the city to develop a short-range plan showing its capital outlay needs and setting forth a plan for financing those needs, and whereas the development of such a, such a plan helps to ensure the city's short-range capital needs are being addressed in a responsible manner, helps to reduce, helps to place those needs in a priority order, and helps anticipate the resources that will be available to finance those needs, and whereas the city staff has developed the attached capital improvement plan for the five-year period beginning in fiscal year '20 and ending in fiscal year '24, and whereas the city council has reviewed the attached capital improvement plan and finds that it reflects the capital needs of the city as can best be reasonably anticipated.
Any questions or comments? I have one comment. I just want to thank the departments and the mayor and the city administrator. This was probably one of the most logical CIPs that I've seen since I've been on the council, and I think it's realistic in the fact that we know that we'd love to have more, but I think that the way that we, the way it was developed and the way it was presented makes a lot of sense, so I congratulate them on, on that. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of 2913, resolution number 2913, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2525 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake. Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2019 general fund budget to appropriate funding for costs of billing real property taxes, whereas the county has notified the city that they will no longer bill city real property taxes, and whereas the city has received estimates for costs for forms, postage, mailing service, personnel, software implementation and software licenses of billing real property taxes totaling $85,000, and whereas the finance department requires, and this ordinance hereby approves, the addition of a cashier one slash two position in order to fulfill the duties required for real property billing, and whereas the city's FY 2019 budget does not contain an appropriation sufficient to cover the above required services and costs, now therefore, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2019 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase current year surplus by $85,000, increase the finance department by an equivalent
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2525 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Mrs. Nichols, do we have any requests for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Anything for the good of the order? Welcome again, Ms. Blake. You made it through the first one.
Thank you.
The rest is easy.
I hope so.
Until we get to budget.
Yeah.
Talk about baptism of fire. Okay, if there's no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.